Good evening, everyone. Welcome to City Council. Let's stand for a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's have a moment of silence before we start the meeting. Maybe we can remember our people down in Texas from the Harveys. Thank you. I'll call a meeting to order. We've got, I don't know if the City Council's got the agenda. We've added, when we had the special meeting the other night, so we've added approval of minutes for August 31st on number three, so we'll be, if y'all hadn't got it, if y'all didn't get a correct copy, you'll be one behind on us there till we go down. So first of all, number two, we need approval of minutes for August 7th, 2017 meeting, please. Thank you, Jean. Thank you, Dan. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. We need approval of the minutes for August 31st, 2017, special meeting, please.
Seconded.
Anne, you made, who seconded?
I think Stephanie did.
Thank you, Stephanie. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. August 2017 financial reports, you have those in your packet. Questions?
I noticed, I think it's something that's typing error, there's a line item for about $2,000 for the LaGrange Elementary, and it says Mayor's discretionary, so I think it's just a typo.
No, I think what Trey's talking about is on the bills paid, it shows that there's already, you haven't.
Yeah, it shows that we did, or it shows that there was $2,000, but I think it's just a typo, it says Mayor's discretionary instead of LaGrange.
I have a question about the geese, geese runners. We discussed this a little bit at our last meeting, and we were told that we were, that we were seeing improvement there. I went back and added up, and so far we've spent almost $7,000 since January on these geese runners. This month, there was another 8.55 and 2.85. So my question is, are we going to, how long are we going to continue doing this? Do we have proof that it is working?
We do have proof it's working.
Because that just seems awful high to me, seven grand in geese runners, and then looking on here, we spent almost five grand on catfish, so we've got five grand on catfish, six, seven, almost seven grand on geese runners, and I just don't think that's, I think we need to take a closer look at all that.
Well, I really think we should see any bill like that, any larger bill such as that, we should at least know about it before they actually do it. That is too much money.
Blake approved that, Jean, if you notice something about him.
I know, but Blake is not City Council, it should have been brought to us first.
Well, I'm sure it's in the Park Board budget, so.
Well, even so, what'd you say, 7,000 and 4,000?
Yeah, and I thought we were just, we were talking about the fens program, I actually had no idea about this stocking of the fish either, because I thought we were, actually I had called the Kentucky Wildlife Department, actually a couple of days ago, or last week, I should say Friday, and spoke to them about the fens program, because that was something that we were speaking, speaking with them about, and we were going to do, because they will provide, they will stock the ponds for us, they only charge us a 25% stocking fee, and there's also other things that they help take care, take care of, so I think that's something that we still need to consider, instead of going on and just, like Jean said, without council approval and knowing, dropping five grand on catfish. We've already spent thousands on testing of the water to make sure it is okay for the fish, and this was kind of, I didn't see this, this one coming here, this almost five grand for the catfish, so I think that's something that should have been discussed.
I thought the ordinance committee was doing more research on the fens, or Trey, can you do?
That's what I said, I just talked to them last week.
We are still in discussion, that is one of the line items for our next ordinance committee meeting later this month, which, at the end of the meeting, I was going to ask for another date, but that's something that is still in progress.
The ordinance committee would still have to bring it back to us.
Correct. So after, and we've, this is, I think it's been with the ordinance committee for about two or three months, kind of going around and trying to get, learn more about the fens program specifically, but then also the overall ordinance, as far as changing that piece, but we wanted to make sure we did our due diligence before bringing it back to the council, so you all could hear the same thing, and then we could decide from that point.
But yet they went on and spent it, and you're all talking about it in ordinance committees.
I didn't know anything specifically about the expenditure for the fish. Normally, the Park Board meets the Monday, same day that we do, but because of the holiday, they're going to be next Monday, so I didn't really, unfortunately, I can't really speak to that. I try to attend their meetings as much as possible, but I didn't really know a whole lot about this one in particular.
I know that they have, you know, they have a certain amount of money that they have, you know, they can spend or whatever, but when they're this large, I think maybe we should have something to say about that. Just my thought, y'all might not agree.
So what can we do about the geese, the geese runners? How long are we going to continue paying for a geese runner? Any idea?
We will have a discussion on that, Shannon, I can give you an email, see where we are, what's going on with it, so if that's satisfactory.
I think just based on what I've heard from other communities, the geese problem is just an ongoing thing that is not going to go away. It's just something that, I mean, we're not the only place dealing with it, so unfortunately, this seems to be the most effective way so far without taking other drastic measures, but yeah, it just seems like this is going to be something ongoing that we're going to have to live with.
As Clarksville did in the news.
Well, I think that the main thing is that the City Council wants to be more involved with these decisions, when they're large, I'm not talking about $1,000 or $100 or anything like that, but when they're large like these two, I think we need to be more informed.
Unfortunately, I think we're kind of hitting on some things sort of out of order. Well, kind of, so when we were going to get to line item 12, that was one thing in the ordinance committee that we had asked for, where if there were large expenditures, that it'd at least be discussed in this meeting, so we would all be aware, but unfortunately, we haven't made it down that far, so.
More questions on the financials?
I notice we're still buying Cokes and Pepsis. I know it's a silly little thing, but it can add up in a year's time, and I don't know too many businesses that have that, or none that I ever worked for, anyway. For some reason, we say something about it every month, and it just continues. I can see there was one thing that made sense, I've already passed it now, an academy or something, but just regular, it still shouldn't be done.
No more questions, need a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Takes us to the Mayor's open remarks. I've got a proclamation for, to read tonight for the City Government Month. I handed the City Council out some brochures where they can go on the citymonth.org for Kentucky League of Cities and get all the information they need, it's quite, quite a nice website for the children. Whereas civics education is vitally important to health democracies, whereas elementary education tends to focus on federal and state government instead of local governments, whereas the Kentucky League of Cities, KLC, has developed City Government Month, a civic awareness campaign to educate elementary students about city services, whereas KLC created City Government Month lesson plans, a coloring activity book, an implication guide, developed a kid-friendly website for use in the classrooms, and created promotional materials for city officials, students, and teachers. Whereas the KLC Board of Directors has declared September 2016 as City Government Month in Kentucky, whereas the KLC Board of Directors encourages city officials and employees to collaborate with local elementary schools to educate students about their city government and to engage them in city services during City Government Month. Now therefore bids resolved that September 2017 is designated as City Government Month in the city of LaGrange, be it further resolved that elected officials and city employees are encouraged to collaborate with local elementary schools to educate students about their city government and encourage them in city services during City Government Month, issued by the Mayor of the city of LaGrange, Kentucky on September 1st, 2017. Mayor's open remarks, Larry Chandler redid the entire gazebo on the courthouse parking lot there that the city owns, and also redid all the benches, so it's quite a, quite of accomplishment to, for Larry and his crew to get that done, so in open comments, I just want to thank Larry and the crew for that, so. And Judge Vogel put some of these smart 911 cards out front to go on to fiscal court website, and this gives you, over your phone, any accident that happens, it will notify you, so if anybody's not signed up, it's, it's, it's a pretty good idea, and I know I've signed up for it, been on it for some time, so just to bring it to your attention. Thank y'all. We're open for public comment. Anyone want to come forward for public comment?
Hi, I have my assistant. My name is Nancy Griffin. I work at the city of LaGrange. I am not a city resident, I do live in a county. I am coming forward tonight with updates on a couple of important things for you all, and also just a personal comment about my own personal situation here at the city. So what I want to do first is tell you what you have in front of you, or you will have in front of you shortly. This is, we have talked about this for about a year in the Vision Committee, and this is what we are calling the Community Green Space Project. We have been doing research for really several years, but the mayor came to me last fall and asked me to open the project back up again. We had a property that we were not sure we were allowed to use, it had some construction demolition stuff in its past, and we were not permitted to move forward without working with the Brownfield folks in Frankfurt. So what you see in front of you is a partial update on that, but what I have done is I have included that with several other things that we're working on in the same area. If you're not familiar with the space that is being talked about here, I'm calling it currently the Community Green Space and Culture Project. It is not something that has been voted on and approved yet, that is your all's job. It is my job to do the research and to present that to the Vision Committee, and also then we will take it to the public as well. So what is in front of you is, it's not the exact press release, but it's basically the press release that is going out later this week to let the public know that we are moving forward with research on this project. I want to thank the mayor for keeping on me about this, and the Brownfield folks in Frankfurt who provided several thousand dollars worth of free services for us to move forward on this. So what we're trying to do is decide what to do with that space. Again, I will not go into detail too much, just show up for the Vision Committee, but there is a set amount of property there that the city owns, and we're trying to move forward and decide what to do with it, and there's about 100 million different ideas, but you will see in that information the things that have come forward for discussion about that project. So just to let you know, that's where we're at, that's what's coming up publicly in the paper maybe next week, and the Vision Committee meeting for more information will be held by Ms. Anne, and it will be the 19th?
Do you say the 19th?
Right, at 5:00. So public and council leaders, everybody, show up for the Vision Committee meeting. That will be our first meeting where we talk about how we're going to take the information forward to survey the public and get community input on that project, because we are ready to move forward on that. So that's the first thing. The second thing is to let you know that LGNE and KU have finished their grant process for our trees. We got our trees put in, they did award that grant, we have thanked them for that, and I promised them that I would come to you tonight and publicly tell you what they have done for us. So they have been wonderful about working with us on trees, and we're going to talk with them again this fall. So just know that they've been great, and we're very thankful. So that's the second thing. Also, you probably don't know yet, because Karen is not here yet, but there has been another grant that has been approved. This grant has gone through the Main Street Program, and I worked with them along with the mayor, and that one is a roof abatement program, that's going to be part of the, I suddenly just forgot the name, what is the name of the, where's Bill? What's the name of, where we give the money to the Main Street folks for their, the facades, the facade, sorry. I just had to look at Bill, and then I remembered. The facade grant program is going to be enhanced, and a grant was approved to begin research to add a roof abatement or roof stabilization program to that, so we did receive an announcement that we were awarded that grant. So that brings me to my final point, and that is to remind you guys that I know that there is discussion about the extra employee, who at this moment happens to be me, and I want to assure you that my time is being very well spent. If you have any concerns, please come by and visit with me. You have already heard now about three grants.
He works at I.
He says I work a lot. We are, that's three grants you know about. We also have the software grant that we received, we're waiting on the splash pad grant, and there are three more that we are working on. So just understand that while, yes, I am helping with the bus, I am also working very hard, and if we get these grants into the city, then my income or my salary will be more than covered. So I just feel like personally, I need to say that publicly. And that's all I have. Any questions?
I just want to thank Nancy, because she's the one who's worked tirelessly on getting Frankfurt down here, and she's not giving herself enough credit for it, but it would be nowhere near where it is without her help, so. She deserves the credit on this.
Well, and if you have questions, just come by, just ask me, I'm open to discussion. I know I'm the odd man out, but come see me, I'll make it worth your time, I promise, okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else in public comment?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Kirkwood, 1515 Dawkins Road, LaGrange, and I want to say how much the community is commenting and appreciating all of the sidewalk walk and all of the cement work that's being done around town. I mean, people are noticing it, people are giving the guys a thumbs up, and it really is appreciated, because it looks like we really care about the people that, I mean, we do care about the people that have to get up and down, you know, with those ramps. The other thing I wanted to say was, when we talked about the dogs and the geese, and just to put in a word for the geese, the geese are flying south, they started yesterday, I've seen them. The dog, my understanding is it costs $90 an hour, that's what was said at the park meeting, and that's crazy, I'm sorry. And I would love, I work with Oldham County Humane Society and Animal Control, and I'm an animal person, and I would love to look around for somebody that would want to do this for maybe $15 an hour. There are border collies out there that need a job like you can't believe. I mean, people want their animals to be able to work, and if there was somebody that, an older person or a teenager that wanted to come out there and for maybe $15, give or take a few dollars, we could do that, but you all let me know if you want that, and I'll be more than glad to do all the footwork for it, and you all can interview them and do whatever you want to do, but I'll get to the dogs and the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else?
Tracy Mings, 6L Ford Lakeview Avenue. I want to thank the City Council, I wish more of you, was contacted to be there about, what was it, Joe, about three weeks ago, we dedicated the new bus.
Three weeks ago.
Something like that, and y'all don't know how much we appreciate that bus and how it needs to be used. I mean, in the past month, I have seen it completely full twice, and that, and one day, I mean, it was only like maybe two blocks, but we had a person having to stand, which I think that's great, you know, it shows at least it's being used. And I want to thank you guys.
Thank you, Tracy.
Can I make a comment to that? Well, I think the bus is great, I mean, it's one of the best things we've ever had, but unless everybody was notified except myself, I knew nothing about the thing that was going on with the bus. I've talked to some other City Council people, and they said they were not notified either.
They weren't, and Nancy did apologize. It all happened fast. It wasn't the City Hall that did this at all, it was the people that ride the bus, two of the people got this together, they got door prizes together, and the only reason that I knew about it is because Tracy rides it to work, and she called me and she said, "You've never ridden the bus, will you please ride the bus with me?" And I thought, what better time for me to ride the bus? That's why none of the council members were notified. She told me, when I got up there, Nancy said, "I apologize, I did not send anything out to the others." She said, "It's my fault," she said, "it's been crazy," and they were trying to get everything ready, and the room's ready to have all these people, they had pizza and everything, and the City Hall didn't get the pizza either, the drinks, nothing. The people on the bus had everything donated, and it was very nice, and I have to say, the buses were full, and I am very glad I went. If any of you all can take the time, do it. It's something you should do, because they appreciated me being there, too. I really do believe that, and it is great.
I would have loved to have been there, since I rode the bus all the time. I was a bus rider, and I didn't know anything about it.
Well, they were planning on it being like two weeks out from about this time, about the end of August, but somebody wanted to go on and do it then, so they, even the workers that did it, the bus people, the bus riders, the two, they were in a rush trying to get everything, you know, done, you know how it is when you get stuck planning something and time runs out.
Thank you, Tracy. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. We'll close public comment. LaGrange, Main Street, Karen is not here tonight, you should have a, in your packet, the information that she sent out to us. So she apologized for not being able to make it. I'm sure if you have any questions, when she, you can call her or ask about these, so. Anyway, she did, she did email these to us, so we can print them out and present them to the council. Ted, LaGrange Utilities?
Good afternoon, everyone. LaGrange Utility had its regular meeting on August 14th, and as you can see, we did have discussion of Interstate 71, we've had some more comments through District 5 on our permit we filed. They're actually wanting us to change a bunch of the signage and wording and distance of the signs, and then I had a call last week that they're wanting to even do a little more stuff to us before they will send it on to Frankfurt, so we haven't given up on Interstate 71 permit yet, we're still working on that. We did talk about the Madison Street pump station, it's up and running, we still got a few control problems with it, but it did handle the rain Friday with no overflows down on Madison Street as we used to have, that we had to have someone down there to sit with the manhole, because it would raise the manhole up in the middle of the street. Well, this rain we just had Friday, it handled it great, so that little problem should be gone. I've talked to Mr. Sibley, and he is happy so far with the smell being from not in his front door anymore, so it was so far Madison Street, when we get it completed, it should be completed within the next month, the road's paved and the sidewalk's put in and everything, then I think that's going to be a blessing to get rid of the eyesore down there and have the new station. Allen Lane, we discussed a piece of property on Allen Lane, as y'all know, it's a piece of property sits right across the railroad tracks on Allen Lane, that we have had a developer come in to talk about developing that, and we did have a discussion on how we would like to have that sewer and the water put in that project if they go forward with that. That was about it, didn't have anything else. We talked a little bit about Zale Smith. Zale Smith, the cuts in the road should be paved this week, if anybody asks, I think it's a little bit of war shot out there over the weekend, and a couple of people had a few problems, but that should be paved back on the cuts on Zale Smith this week. Any questions from anyone?
Figures looks good, Ted.
I think I asked last month, or maybe two months ago, about the backside of LaGrange Elementary, where they took out the sidewalk.
That's, they got, they got to the end of this month to have everything finished.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, because we've called them, and they're actually, actually the reason they haven't done the sidewalk now is because they got to do one. done the sidewalk now is because they got to do one more, they got to do one more cut up there as four's taking the old force main out right up there where they connected on its school property. They've got to do a cut there to undo the, cut the old force main out, so they want to do all the sidewalks at one time.
At the same time.
And they've got, they've got to the end of, end of this month to have it all finished.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay? Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Now?
Good evening. I'm here to talk about a chronic nuisance problem, property in LaGrange. In fact, many of you or several of you have contacted me about this property. It is 1606 Batances Court. I'm sure, as I said, some of you are familiar with it. I think I'll just have to use my printed copies. I've received numerous complaints about this property. You should have a, you should have a copy of the complaint in your, in your packet. You should, I've received numerous complaints about this property, and I've also received a petition from adjoining and nearby property owners. I've attached a copy of that petition. It has over 150 signatures on it. They're requesting that the city either demolish or rehabilitate the property, and that's what I'm here to discuss tonight. I've inspected the property. Actually, I've inspected it numerous times, and there are many violations. I've listed them, starting with 15501 Kentucky Building Code. Has to do with fitness for human habitation. 15502, this building I've determined is dangerous and injurious to the health, safety, and moral occupants of the structure, neighboring structures or other residents of the city. And 15515, compliance. If you look at the sentence at the, that's at the bottom of the page, it says, "Nor shall any vacant dwelling be, building be permitted to exist which does not comply with the following requirements in this subchapter." And this, this property has been vacant since 2009. The, the occupant Darlene Bruce, she passed away in May of 2009. The utilities were shut off to the, to the building shortly after that in June, and there's been no running water or electricity to the property since then. The city is, has maintained the property on and off over the years. We boarded it up. There is evidence of insect and animal infestation in the home. We had to flea bomb the property, and right now the, the property is boarded up, and it has been boarded up since 2009. It's my understanding that the bank started foreclosure proceedings, but they did not move forward on it because it would be expensive because there are no known heirs. At the time, there were no known heirs, and there are multiple liens on the property. Several little liens are from LaGrange for the maintenance, boarding up, and the infestations. So, any questions so far? Feel free to ask at any time. So, as you can see, there are 150, over 150 signatures. They're from, primarily from residents in Pear Orchard neighborhood where the property's located. On page two of my citation, I start to, I list, and we've been all through this before, all the sanitary facilities that are required, hot and cold water supply, water heating facilities. Obviously, those haven't been, those, those are not in compliance because there's been no running water to the property since 2009. I've attached a copy of a letter from LaGrange Utilities as evidence to show that there's been no running water to the property since 2009, since June 15th. That was when the shut off date was. On 15527, sanitation requirements, that primarily has to do with the upkeep of the exterior of the home. There's been no maintenance to the yard or to the trees or shrubbery around the house, and in fact, the first time I went by the house, you can't even tell there's a house there. Seriously, it's, it's that bad. So, I've got, I've got some photographic evidence that address 15527, and I'll start with those right now. I'll go ahead and put them on the overhead. Last year, I did have a member of LaGrange, from LaGrange, help me open the house up so I could take some pictures of the inside. All I did was take off a, a piece of plywood and stuck my camera in the back door. There was no way I was going to go in this house. So, and as you can see, this is, that photograph is from the back. That's the kitchen. The, the resident before she died, she was a known hoarder, and that was the condition of the kitchen. Got another photograph that, and these were all taken from the same vantage point. So, you can see there's the stove. The sink was, it was inaccessible because of debris. Here's third picture of the interior of the home. Now, these are the only pictures I have of the interior of the home, so I wasn't going to go in there and try to get any more. So, as I said, there was, there's evidence of insect and animal infestation. LaGrange Public Works did have to bug bomb the property a few times just to, just to knock down the fleas, and some of the complaints I've been getting from the neighbors are, they have to do with rodents and insects coming off the property. So, this is a view of the property from the street. You can see the roof line. Now, these pictures are about two years old, so, but nothing substantially has changed since then, but I'll get to, there have been some changes. This is, this is a photograph of the back porch. That's, I took off the, we took off the top piece of plywood on that back door, and that's where I took the photographs. Those are, that's the deck right off the kitchen. That is the backyard. You can see the fence, barely see the fence and neighboring houses. That is a view from the front yard. Let me know if you have any questions. There's a view from the neighbor's yard. I had permission from the neighbors to come in and take photographs from their yard. I did walk into the backyard and take a picture of the back of the house from, from the backyard, and that's it. This is a, this is a good example of what the neighbors have to deal with. That's a neighboring home on the right. The subject house is on the left. You can't see it in this photograph because it's obscured by the overgrowth. And here is a picture of property on the right, and, or property on the left. You can see the property on the right. That's the driveway to the subject property. You can't even see the house in this photograph. About three weeks ago, when the person that brought the petition in, her and her husband, they live next door, they asked if they could trim the trees up a little bit, just to kind of knock down some of the animal and insect infestation, and we said, "Please, if you feel so inclined, go ahead." This was taken about three weeks ago after they trimmed some of the trees, so that's what the house looks like. That's only the front yard. That's, that's the only cleanup that's been done. This I took three weeks ago. That's the side yard. That's actually from the driveway looking down the west side of the house. And this is, this is from the neighbor on the east. That's their yard looking into the backyard. Any questions so far? Okay, based on my recommendations, I've notified the parties of interest in this case, which included the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Finance and Administration Cabinet, Attorney for the, the bank that holds the note on this property, and the Oldham County Attorney. As I said, we, at the time we started repairing this, there were no known heirs, so that's where the, where the difficulty is in this situation. So, my recommendation is that we go through the same procedure and, and condemn the property as unfit for human habitation and force the bank to either foreclose on it or allow us to, to demolish it. I did get an estimate for demolition, and it is, it's around $6,000. Fifty-six hundred, so, give or take. Now, that was about a year ago I got that estimate, so that might change. So, any questions?
Does that include, does that include like taking everything away, clearing the property flat?
Yes, that includes, that includes demolishing the building, taking out all the underbrush, and planting grass.
Is there a basement?
No. No, it's a slab home. So, they would take out the slab, bring dirt in, and just make it an empty lot.
Okay.
So, my recommendation is to, is for city council to vote on this and move like we did last time. So, any other questions?
Everybody this afternoon, it looks like some, I'm not saying that it's cleaned up at all, but it looks like somebody has started removing, or at least cutting back the brush.
Yeah, that was, that was the neighbors. They, they approached us three weeks ago with the petition and asked if they could clean out some of the underbrush, primarily on their side, and we said, "Yeah, if you, if you want to." So, and I believe Public Works went by and chipped up the branches in New York. Are they still there?
They were, but I saw Public Works was all over the city.
Yeah.
Cutting up stuff today, so, yeah.
Any other questions? As I said, I know some of you have called me personally about this property, and we've been, this is, this is not a new issue for us. We've been working on this. The city attorney's been doing a title search. We've been trying to find known heirs or somebody that can take responsibility for this property for over a year. So, this is kind of our last resort. We're going to force the, the mortgage holder to, to act, or we will act. Any other questions?
What do we need to do to proceed on this? I'm one of the ones that's been emailing you.
Yes, yes, I have.
I have friends that live on that road and...
Yes, and they're probably ones that, that participated in the petition, so...
Yes, they are. I saw their names, so...
Let me pull out mine.
It seemed like with the last one, there was about three motions that were involved in the whole process, so I don't know if it's the same situation here.
Yes, it is a similar situation. Okay. If after the, the notice in the hearing, and this is the hearing, if city council determines that the structure under consideration is unfit for human habitation, occupancy, or use, according to the standards adopted in Chapter 155 of the City Code, it shall state in writing these findings as fact in support of the determination, and shall cause to be issued and served upon owner thereof by the enforcement official an order requiring the owner to repair, alter, or improve the structure to render it fit for human habitation, occupancy, or use, or to vacate, demolish, and remove and/or close the structure. So, city council needs to make a motion supporting my, my determination that the property is unfit for human habitation, and then, then you make an order requesting that it be repaired or demolished.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we move forward with having the property at 1606 Batances Court deemed unfit for human habitation.
I'll second it.
Got a motion to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstention, motion carries.
Okay, now I'd like to have an, an order from city council requiring that the owner or, in this case, the mortgage holder within the time specified, repair, alter, or improve the structure to render it fit for human habitation, occupancy, or use, or to vacate, demolish, and remove and/or close the structure.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Ann, second by Debbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
That's all I need. Thank you.
Andrew, we got the second reading and public hearing of ordinance 9/2017.
This is ordinance number nine, series 2007. Ordinance number nine, series 2017, City of LaGrange, Kentucky, modifying Section 11707 concerning alcohol license fees. Whereas the city council of the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, has authority pursuant to statute to enact and modify ordinance relating to the city, and whereas it is desirable that specific terms concerning temporary licensing for auction of alcohol beverage be added to the existing ordinance, therefore be enacted and ordained that Section 11707D of the Code of ordinances be modified as follows. Subsection D, fees, add special temporary alcohol beverage auction license KRS 243.036, $110. This ordinance shall become effective upon its passage and publication.
Thank you, Andrew. We have a motion on the ordinance 9/2017.
We usually make a motion in a second on it before we go into public hearing.
Checking him.
I think we got a motion second now. We got a motion going to public hearing.
Motion for public hearing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
We're now in public hearing. Anybody want to come forth on ordinance 9/2017? Questions or motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Open for discussion. Any discussion on it?
Yeah, can I get some clarification? So, does this, is this pertaining to if a nonprofit has a silent auction of some type and alcohol is in, is part of the items being auctioned?
Chief, you can probably...
That they would need to have this license?
I'll let you, chief. Thank you, chief.
There are special provisions for 501(c)(3) in the ABC statute. It wouldn't pertain to them, but what we had recently is we had a for-profit organization wanting to auction off several high-dollar pieces of alcohol, and they did because we didn't have a license in our ordinance, and if we don't have one in our ordinance, then they just go by the state.
Okay.
So, and we actually received some calls from some actual alcohol distributors here in LaGrange to sell a package and buy the drink. They said, "They're getting away with doing this, they should pay taxes like we do." So, that's where that came from. But there are special provisions under 501(c)(3). I don't even think they can auction alcohol without a state license, and they're exempt from any city licenses.
Okay, so this doesn't affect local nonprofits who are fundraising?
No, because their state statute pertains to nonprofit organizations that exempt them from, I don't even think big cities like Louisville can make them nonprofit pay for alcohol license. They have to get a state license. They, I don't think there's any city license, but this is specific for profit because there are limitations within the state statute on nonprofit where cities can't charge them anyway.
So, if the liquor store already has the license to sell, does this, them, pertain to them, or is it for...
They can't gamble on property.
Okay.
This would be like, uh, the Chamber of Commerce wants to have a, you know, own their nonprofit, but somebody, if they're nonprofit, well, if they're a business that isn't nonprofit, they want to have a charity event, okay? And as part of, they're going to auction off a signed Wolford Reserve bottle by Coach Calipari, okay? And they're, they're, if they're going to do it in the City of LaGrange, because they're for-profit, they're going to have to get a state license, which they have to dot all the i's and cross all the t's and give it to us.
Okay.
They have to also fill out our city license and cross all the t's and dot all the i's. We send it into the state. The state approves it, and because our ordinances are in line with the state law under the state alcohol beverage control, if they pass the state, then they automatically pass ours, then the state... then they automatically pass ours, then the state will issue a license and send it to us, saying, hey, they passed everything, we'll make sure, and then we'll issue them a license. If they're nonprofit, they don't even have to come to us, they can go straight to the ABC. But there's different regulations regarding the nonprofit that we don't have, and we can't, under statute, we can't tax them anyway.
Right.
But, this is specifically for for-profit organizations that wanna have auctions, silent auction, or a regular auction, and like I said, we was contacted by package liquor stores and buy the drinks, and they're having this event, did they have a license to do it? And we looked at our ordinance, contacted Steve, he said, we don't have it in our ordinance, so by state law, the state has a license, as long as they get a state license, they can have the event, and the people are saying it's not fair for them to be able to do this because they're not having to pay state taxes and we are, so that's why we're here.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Any other discussion? Have, we got a motion in a second? Go roll call, Steph.
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad?
Yes.
Eight to zero.
Motion carries, thank you. Andrew, we got down to ordinance 10-2017.
As there's no substantive change from the last year's ordinance, I'm authorized to read this in summary form. This is ordinance number 10-2017, an ordinance levying a general tax for the City of LaGrange, Kentucky, whereas it is necessary for the municipal corporation of the City of LaGrange to obtain funds for the operation and maintenance of the city government, and to maintain police protection of the residents of said city, and further to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and, whereas the Commonwealth of Kentucky, through its statutes and constitution, particularly KRS 92.280, KRS 92.281, and all other applicable law, does hereby authorize and empower a city of home rule class to levy a tax for general purposes. Now therefore, be it ordained as follows, this ordinance shall take effect upon and be enforced upon its date of passage approval and publication as required by law.
Thank you, Andrew. We have a motion on the ordinance 10-2017.
Motion to accept ordinance 10-2017.
Trey.
Second.
Thank you, Debbie. Motion for public hearing?
Motion for public hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions, we're now in public hearing. Anybody need, wanna come forward for reading on 10-2017? Motion to go out of public hearing?
Motion to go out of public hearing.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Thank you, we got a motion in a second. Steph, you wanna do a roll call? Is there any discussion on this by city council? Before we do?
Jason?
Yes.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad? Eight to zero.
Motion carries, thank you. Andrew, ordinance 13-2017.
Commonwealth of Kentucky, City of LaGrange, ordinance number 13, series 2017, an ordinance adopting the City of LaGrange, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, by estimating funds for operating, for operations of city government, whereas the annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council of LaGrange, Kentucky, and whereas, city council has reviewed such budget proposal and accepted same as presented. Now therefore, be it ordained by the City of LaGrange, Kentucky as follows. Section 1, revenues, grand total $6,082,973.83. Expenses, grand total $6,082,973.83. Section 2, introduced and seconded and adopted at a duly convened meeting of the governing body held on September 5, 2017, after a first reading held on October 31, 2017, signed by the mayor of the City of LaGrange, attested by the city clerk, filed and indexed as provided by law. This ordinance shall take effect upon its passage approval and publication according to the law, and shall continue amended or until June 30, 2018, whichever should occur first.
Thank you, Andrew. We have a motion on 13-2017.
Motion to accept ordinance 13-2017.
Thank you, Trey.
Second.
Thank you. Motion for public hearing?
Motion for, seconded.
All in favor? Abstentions opposed, we're now in public hearing. Anybody wanna come forth on ordinance 13-2017?
Yes, Bill Amline, 205 Maple Court, I have one question. Will the salary increases be retroactive to the beginning of the fiscal year?
According to the law, and I'm not, I haven't dug into the numbers, but when this budget is adopted by city council, the executive would have the authority under each line item and each expenditure fund to administer those funds as they were, as they were budgeted. And so, for example, with your question, and did you say with regard to the raises?
Yeah, salary increases.
So, with the salary increases and the administration expense, if the $1,027,338.20 includes those raises retroactively, I don't, I don't know, but if that number includes the retroactive raises, then absolutely the city's authorized to administer those funds.
I would think that it would. I would think that it would because the salaries have not changed from the original budget that was submitted to the council at the beginning of the fiscal year, so I would, I would, I would think that they would.
So, just for a point of clarification to the other members of council, I don't think any retroactive language needs to go in there. This budget is effective for the entire fiscal year, and so long as that administration expense includes those numbers totally retroactive to July 1, then the mayor's authorized to expend those funds accordingly.
Just to clarify too, the page that has the proposed and current administrative numbers are calculated, it looks like, through 2080 hours, which would be 52 weeks times 40 hours, so it looks like it would cover the whole, whole year.
Motion to go out in public, comment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion by the council?
I would like to know why we are not giving our main person in administration a raise. I think that's a little odd. You're the leader of the pack. You should've got a raise as well as the others.
I don't, that wasn't our decision, Jean.
I know, it was hers, but I mean, I'm surprised that we went along with it. Might come back and bite you in the butt, but maybe not. I know it was her idea, I know that.
Jean, that was a question I had going through the documents, it does look like Ms. Cooper's numbers proposed are the same as last year's, and I had a question about that too. I haven't had any clarification as to why.
I really don't have an answer, I just figured since, I just wanted to see the employees under me get a raise, then.
In my only concern, I appreciate that, my only concern is, you know, we talked about it, the committee across the board raise, and certainly you're part of the board, and, you know, I would hate to have any issues in the future if somebody questioned why the council did not include one person in a raise, even if it's that person's opinion and decision, so, my thoughts going through this, that everybody was gonna be included, but maybe I'm mistaken.
Other discussion?
I think it has to be settled before we vote. We can't just vote on it like that, can we?
I'm sorry?
I was just wondering if we can vote on it with it, I mean...
It's up to the council, it's council, the council's gotta approve its budget.
I think it's great that she, I figured that was the reason she did it, was to be sure that...
I'll discuss it and see what you wanna do, it's...
Ms. Cooper, I'm understanding...
I think it's fair to her.
I agree, I agree, I just, is that your, are you asking that you not be included in the raise? I mean, just for the record, that's your request?
Yes.
Okay.
No way that we can stipulate that she does get the raise and still pass it? Or do we have to change the whole thing again? I know the reason that she did it, in other words, so that they could get more and she would stay the same. I mean, it's very nice of her and very good-hearted, but I really don't think she should be left out of the raise.
I think in order, if council decides to amend that specific item, we would need to come back for a first and second reading to be compliant, however, there's certainly, there are certainly grounds where we could do an amending ordinance after this one is adopted, so the city has funds to operate, and then an amending ordinance would be very simple to add that.
Okay, so it wouldn't stop it, it would go, it would go through with an amendment, right?
Well, yes, after, if this budget is adopted and passed by council, we, someone else, or at our request, we can prepare an amending ordinance to include that, that raise.
I can't say in ordinance committee meeting, one of our, I guess compromises as a whole was that we levied the pay increase across the board for all departments, so I appreciate you not wanting to take one, but we did agree to have them across the board. We felt like that was fair for everybody involved.
Would that be considered a substantial change, I guess, in the budget if...
What is, what's your question, Mayor?
Would that be considered a substantial change, as they say, in the budget?
I think, I think so. I think when it comes to budgets, that those changes would be considered a substantial change requiring another reading.
But it's correct, or it's lawful, if we do an amendment, it still passes.
Okay, so we can, we can approve tonight and have an amendment next month?
At next month's meeting, we can absolutely have an amendment going forward.
Oh, okay, okay, I see, all right.
And make that amendment retroactive to July.
To July 1, yeah. I do wanna say, or share, I guess, a few other things that came out of committee, so we've been trying to work on this collectively for about a month and a half, which is definitely not enough time, so, since it appears that this is gonna go through the ordinance committee meeting going forward, we had discussed starting our review of the annual budget in January, so we would have plenty of time to prepare, to actually hit this on the date that we're required by law to try to approve a new budget. Something else that we had discussed, and I know we touched on this just a little bit in the early part of the meeting, but was larger expenditures, as departments knew ahead of time that they would be spending, dollars would, would share that with us, so that was, that was also an agreement for this upcoming year, or for the rest of the year, just so we were both aware and to help with our transparency of expenditures.
Can I clarify though? I thought we agreed that it was only if they were gonna go over budget on that line item, that they were needed to come, I mean, if, if the city, if the Parks Department is budgeted for $5,000 for fish, and the Parks Department spends $5,000 for fish, I don't see them, the need, if we approved that, for them to come forward.
Correct.
But if they're gonna spend seven, then they need to come and say something.
So, any, so we have the worksheet that is accompanying the budget, so, any line item that is gonna go possibly higher, but still remain within the overall expenditure, that would be brought to us, just to let us know that, hey, you know, we're having to spend a little bit more money, I think one of the items used was if we have a truck that has an engine that needs to be replaced, and we have, we've, I think we have like $2,000 for that specific, for maintenance, that we would be made aware that, you know, we're possibly having to go over that item, but we're still under the overall budgeted amount.
Any other discussion? Got a motion in a second, you wanna do a roll call, Steph?
Jason?
Yeah, my vote is yes, contingent on the retroactive amendment next month, including Ms. Cooper's salary as part of the, across the board raise.
Stephanie?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Trey?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Tad? Eight to zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Appreciate the work on it. Takes us down to the old business, anybody got any old business to come before? Old business? New business?
Mayor, I have one, one thing I wanted to talk about, just briefly, just for us to think about, and I don't even know if there's anything we can do about it, or if now's the right time, but with the new construction and the way the traffic is going on 146 and 53, there are situations that I've noticed where the train is in town and people are going 146 eastbound, waiting to turn right on southbound 53, and people that are trying to go straight in the same lane cannot do anything, and I'm sure people have talked to all of us about that, but I just wanted to throw it out there for consideration on what we might want to do, if there's anything we can do to resolve that issue, and maybe the stoplights that replace the four-way stops will resolve that issue, I'm not sure, but just wanted to bring it to everybody's attention.
And hopes the traffic signal, when they get it up, will, will take care of that, but I do, I know what you're talking about, exactly, it's very true, so.
Do we happen to know when those traffic signals will be put into place?
No, I haven't got a date on yet. Sure have. I'm sure the state will, I think they've done the engineering work on it, so I'll, I'll see if I can find out, and if I do, I'll send an email out on it.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question, and maybe I missed it, for the vision committee meeting, where's the location gonna be?
I'm hoping at the community center, but I do need to confirm that there's...
I'm hoping at the community center, but I do need to confirm that there's availability in one of the rooms there.
Okay.
Yes, I'll send out an email. So Tuesday, the 19th, 5:00 p.m., pending, hopefully, the community center.
What's the date? I'm sorry.
Tuesday, the 19th.
Tuesday, the 19th?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will ask for the, or the, excuse me, the ordinance committee members, looking at two dates, either 9:20, which is a Wednesday, or the following Wednesday is 9:27. Is there a preference?
I think the 20th is fine.
Okay.
Can I just request it not be until... Sorry, I'm just trying to figure out what time I need to get people where. 6 o'clock?
September 20th?
Yes, at 6.
That is, that is the Main Street.
Oh, you're right. That is.
That's State of the Community night, Ann.
Yeah.
For Main Street.
Okay. It's the 27th, acceptable?
Yes, that should be fine.
What time works best? 5:30, 6?
6 is better for me, if that, if you want to do that.
6, okay. 6 o'clock, we'll have it at the, at City Hall as, as usual. So thank you very much.
September 27th at 6. What time is your vision, Ben, Ann? I'm sorry again.
5:00 p.m.
5?
5.
Thank you. We ready for new business?
Joe, are you going to introduce our guests?
You bring it up for new business.
Well, I know.
It's got to be brought up. Jean, I don't bring it up.
Okay, I'll bring it up. These folks are here to, we had a meeting last Tuesday, where the several board members came, and Mr. Schultz and Heather from the elementary school, she's the principal there. Kevin Woosley's on the Board of Educ, no, Board, yeah, that's right, Vice President of it, I believe. Anyway, would one of you like to tell these folks what this is about? Or would you like for me to make my motion first? I think we better have a little bit.
Hello, Councilman and Mayor. We're here today. This is Greg Schultz, the superintendent. I'm the vice chairman of the school board, and we've got Heather Thomas here, who's the principal at LaGrange Elementary. A couple of years now, we've been talking about Old Jefferson Street, which is the road that runs in front of LaGrange Elementary. It's in really bad shape, and we were trying to figure out ways to get it at least brought up to standard. The problem we have is, it's not school board property, so we can't fix the road. We feel it is city property for a couple of reasons, and I'll go over those in just a second. But the, the road is in desperate need to be repaired. I don't know if you've been down there a while, but it hasn't been paved in probably 20 years. It's old tree that's been taken out, is blocking a parking space, and it's, folks are still using it as a cut-through in the mornings to come in, drop their kids off, and then they're going back out through the parking lot of the service station beside it. So it's really a safety issue for our kids. In '99, was on this city council when the board came in front of us and asked us then to consider closing that street. The council took action on it that night. We didn't close it, but you guys did block it off and allowed the school board to put a sign there at the end, which kept cars from running through there, which is one of the reasons why the school board feels like it is city property, because at that point, you guys took action on that road. We've talked to the state. The state seems to think it's not their property. They've talked to their engineer. We've talked to their right-of-way agent.
Kevin, could you get over in front of the mic a little more, please? Appreciate it.
They feel like that it is not a state road. If you look at old maps of LaGrange back in the 20s and 30s, Jefferson Street continued from its location now, straight down in front of LaGrange Elementary, and ended in Sixth Street. The city limits at that point was to the west of Sixth Street, where the church is now. They, the state put in what was then called Highway 22 from Crestwood to LaGrange, and matched it up with Jefferson Street, and then renamed the section in front of the school, Old Jefferson Street. The address of that school is 600 Jefferson Street, which means at one point it was part of the city street system. So we come to you today for two requests. Either one, that you pave it, or two, you give that property to the school board so that we can take deed to it, and then we'll maintain it. So that's what we're here for. And we've got Mr. Schultz and Ms. Thomas here to help answer any questions. He's committed, the superintendent's committed to fixing it if it comes school board property, and we'll, we'll maintain it, just like we do our other properties.
You know, for me, I'm fairly new to the game here, so thank you, Ms. Woosley, for sharing all that history. It's a little bit of an hassle, but more importantly, it's a safety concern for our students. We have students that parents will, even though we tell them not to, will drop their kids off at the auto repair shop, and they'll run across that street. And I'm always in fear of someone getting hurt, especially our elementary kids are on the road very, very early. We are, as Ms. Woosley said, we are committed. If you are see fit to grant us that little stretch of land, we will take care of it. We will pave it, we will line it, and we will maintain it.
Well, I would like to, at this time, to make a motion to city council that we deed this over to the school board so they can repair that road and fix up what should have been done many years ago. But we have to give them permission. We have to deed it over to them. Steve told us at the meeting that he, we can't really find a deed, but he would come up with something. Did he leave anything for you?
Well, he told me that he found, sorry.
I specifically haven't done research on this particular piece of property, and so the only information I'm going off of is what he told me, which was that he'd been over to the deed room and had, had reviewed it and had not located any documents indicating that the city had possession. So at most, he indicated that what we could do was a quitclaim deed, which is if the city does in fact have an interest in, in the property, if the city had, previously had an interest in the property, currently has or will have an interest in that property, we could deed over what interest, whatever interest that may be, to the school board, or to the schools. But Mr. Emery was not able to locate any deed.
I know. We already knew that at the time we had the meeting. But, I mean, I have asked up here at this meeting several times for the city council to, to agree that we should pave it, just because of the sight of it, and because pride should make us... So I'm asking you all now, if I, I will make a motion that we, whatever you said.
Quitclaim deed.
Over to the school board system, and let them pave it and make it look like the other schools in our county. And that is my motion.
Are you making a motion to deed the entire, is it 50 or 60 foot right of way?
60 foot right of way.
Are you making a motion to deed for the city to do a quitclaim deed on the entire 60 foot right of way?
Yes.
We have, the owner of the service station is here. Do you have any information on that?
I've got.
On that street?
I've got, yes.
I've done, I've done research on it, and I've talked with the state. And the state, like you said, says it's not theirs. The city says it's not, not ours. I have had two children to go through that school, and I still have one there. And I have seen several accidents, cars hitting another car, and then just pulling out and leaving. And it is, it's very dangerous. So I agree with you.
You going to second my motion?
I think I will second your motion. I think that it does need to be handed over to the school, school board for the safety of the kids.
Well, Wayne must want to say something.
The way I understand it is, when they close a road, the property owners on both sides, they split it right down the middle. Here it is, right here, in black and white.
I don't know. I got your, but that paper where it said Old Jefferson Street, it had your place there. And it said you had it done, that you had it done. You had the survey done. And it's, drew the line right at the end of the road. And you must have seen it, because it said it was your, I'm sorry, I don't have the term. When they went and measured it.
Well, I'm asking you to go by the law. That's the law right there on, on closing of a road.
So you want to pay for half of the road to be paved? Is that what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying. I pave the other half if I'm going to get the half that I should get.
The, the city didn't close the road in '99. We just blocked it.
I was going to say, it's my understanding, we, yeah, we saw a dot, there was something that was read that specifically stated the road's not being closed. It was just cut off at one end.
If they, if they give it all to the school, and they block it off in the back, I can't even get in my back three doors at my shop.
Won't be blocked, won't be blocked off to your back door. It's only going to be blocked where the, the cars can't bring their kids across through there and drop them off. It's making a hazard, a very bad hazard.
It's fine with me. I used to have concrete bumbers there, and they drove over them anyway.
Yeah, well, they're planning on putting something there.
That's fine, but if they got the right-of-way alley back and put the fence all the way to the full 60 foot, I can't get in the back of my building. I just don't see how that's fair. I've been there since 1935, you know, shop has, so.
You've been there since 1935?
Shop's been there since 1935.
I was going to say, you weren't even born, Wayne, in 1935. No, they're not going to, they're not going to close off anything that would keep you from the back of your garage.
All I'm asking is you go by the law, and that's the law, closing of the road.
I mean, we're getting ready to deed it to them. I guess you would have to discuss it with them. But we, we don't.
I think you need to read the law first.
The law, okay.
Mayor? Only problem, the only problem I have with it is there's no proof that it belongs to the state, and there's no proof it belongs to the city. What proof is that? That's the only thing that I'm worried about, even a quitclaim deed, or deed period, or... If I have to sign anything, I have a problem with it, because I don't even know it belongs to the city. I mean, you're saying Old Jefferson Street, and the address is Jefferson Street. City Hall's address is Jefferson Street. Everybody on there is Jefferson Street. But the city doesn't own Jefferson Street. It's a state highway.
It's not called that. It's called Old Jefferson Street.
It doesn't matter.
Joe, in 1900, when they built that school, it was, the street was Old Jeff, it was Jefferson Street, because Highway 22 hadn't been built yet. So that road was Jefferson Street, where City Hall is now.
What does that?
And it ended in Sixth Street. So, and it's on city maps, so that's, that's just like saying you don't own Sixth Street. It's a street that was in the city map system. So it's, it's a street. They renamed Old Jefferson Street when they connected Highway 22 to Jefferson Street.
And I know at the meeting, Steve did go along with this and said it was all right to do, unless he changed his mind after he walked out of the meeting and hasn't bothered to tell us.
Well, and I mean, I don't, I, I think we, we as council have sat up here and said, if we can say we don't have a claim to the, to that street, we can forfeit any claim we have to that street, then I would say it's up to the school board to get some proof from the state that they're not going to claim that street. And then it's yours.
I think it would help you, Wayne, more than anything, because it would keep people.
Before you just go quick-deed in something, I, I would like to have a meeting with the school board myself and work out something. I'm, I'm not hard to work with. I'm just trying to make a living here. I got, you know, five guys that work for me, you know, need a place to work. I don't want to block off nobody, and I don't want to make it hurt, but, you know, these guys are here this, this few years, and, you know, five years down the road, somebody else is in, and they decide to do something different, and they own it. You know, I'm out. So I, I just don't get that.
Well, well.
Now, how you quit-deed something, you're not even sure you own.
We'll talk to.
I'd like to hear from LaGrange Utility, too, and see if they got any issues with this.
Well, I don't know. I would think Joe would have already asked that, or done it, you know, made sure.
No, I hadn't asked that, Jean. Don't put words in my mouth, okay?
I'm not putting them in your mouth. I said, I would have thought you would have checked it by now.
Thank you.
This is ridiculous. Absolutely.
I'm telling you, Director, LaGrange Utilities, and no matter what you do with that section of the road, I need a binding element put in there that we have an easement on our water line that runs right in front of the schoolhouse, right at the sidewalk. It goes through there now. Because we do have a four-inch water line that runs right down the edge of that street, right in front of the school. So I'd like to have, no matter what you do, I'd like to see a binding element put on there that we still obtain our 15-foot easement.
Also a utility line that runs across that easement, too. So it's, those easements would stay in there. We've really been talking about this for two years now. Mainly for a year, we've gotten serious about it. We just really wanted to move this conversation forward. We're, we're going to work with our neighbors here. Superintendent just told him, we're, we're going to be good neighbors. We just want it fixed. And if the state can't fix it, and the city says you guys can't own it, and you're not going to fix it, then we'll, we'll accept responsibility for it. But there needs to be some kind of legal action that says we're on the property, or the Department of Education won't let us fix it. It's that simple.
Mr. Woosley?
If it makes the council feel better, I mean, Wayne and I were just talking, we want to be good neighbors to everybody. And so there's no reason why we can't have a conversation and come back to you and let you know what that conversation looks like. Our goal is not to disrupt his business. Our goal is to maintain the integrity of that street and provide safety for our kids. He doesn't have any concern with that either. I don't want to cut him out of business. He doesn't want a kid hurt. I think it's a win-win situation. We can work this out.
Again, I don't understand why Steve would have left without saying, you know, that won't be binding. He didn't say that. He said, you know what he said. And he said he could come up with that.
City attorney can't put a binding element on it, Jean. The city council will have to put a binding element.
That's why I'm, there's a motion on the floor, Joe.
What is your motion?
Joe, has, has Steve even seen this other document that just came up? That's a, I don't know.
It's just a copy of a statute that, that, that talks about when, when roads are discontinued. It's not a, it's not a survey or a deed or a plat.
Okay.
It's just a statute.
Mr. Schultz, do you think by next month, you all would be able to all talk and have, have, report back to us, or?
I have no doubt that we can do that. I mean, once again, we have the same interest. You know, we were just talking, the road's in bad shape. And if we can fix that, I mean, it's, it's taking taxpayer money, because it's going to cost us about $100,000 in which to do it. That's money that the LaGrange City Council does not have to expend. It's our school building. We maintain the roads or the parking lots in front of all the other school buildings. We just wanted to have an equitable site, just like any other school building in the district.
Would it be possible, because we, we recently have closed an alleyway, just...
I'm paving it.
No, not an alleyway.
That's where you're going for it.
Hey, hey, we need everything paved. But we, we recently closed an alley on the His, History Center property, and it just so happened that both sides of the property was, was the same owner. So we didn't have to, I guess, address with two separate owners. But we, we do have other alleyways where we're in the process of going through exactly what we're kind of going through here. We're just talking about a road instead of an alleyway. I, I would suggest, if possible, and I know you're attending tonight, but if you could attend the ordinance committee meeting, we've, we've kind of discussed this. Mary Ann has done a ton of research. So kudos to you, but on the 27th at 6 o'clock, I mean, we want this to, to, you know, get clarified to where we're all satisfied, where we do have the easement still there if we, we need to. But I, I would prefer that we still go that route. Like I said, we've done a lot of research, but...
I think it's a little unfair to ask them to come to another meeting when it was already decided that we could do it. Now you're asking them to come to another meeting? I feel certain that these two men can work out any problems that there are.
If you want us to work out the...
The broad strokes?
The broad strokes before your next meeting, I'm okay with doing them. I mean, we, we can definitely sit around the room, and we can hash that out, and we can sign a joint letter.
And that would be, we had, we actually had, Mr. Emery had prepared a form to, to be notarized, so it's all legal and, and fair to both property owners, to where there is an agreement. And you're correct, when we do, when we have closed something, both sides have equal right. They also have a right to not accept any. That's their choice. And that's, that's how we've, that's how we've done the first one. That's how we are planning on doing the ones going forward. Just sounds like this one's maybe number two.
Well, that's what I'm saying. I don't think they should have to come to, but one more meeting. If they discuss it between themselves, it's really only two people that should be involved, because we keep saying, our mayor keeps saying it is not ours. We have nothing to do with it, nothing to say, nothing to do. So if it's only going to be between these two, they can have their talk, and then I hate to ask you to come back one more month, but...
I don't think you have to be present for that closure. The History Center was not present for that closure of that alleyway. But we do have to have the, if we follow what we did on the other one, we, we have to have it notarized, and both sides, both parties agree. So you'd have to name essentially an executor for that property.
There's a difference in the closure than the quick deed that they were asking for. They asked for a deed, or Steve said it would be a quick deed.
Quick deed.
Quick claim.
Quick claim, quick claim, right, quick claim. So there's... So there's a little difference in, if you actually close it, then Mr. Kincaid gets part of it, the school board gets part of it. They, they split it if it's actually closed.
We didn't close it, right? We didn't actually close it.
I think I'm starting to agree with Trey that we're going to need to have Mr. Well, we don't have Mr. Emery here and we don't have the document that they discussed. So that is why I do feel we need to probably punt this to the Ordnance Committee meeting so that we have all of the facts. Because currently, it sounds like we don't have all of the paperwork. I hate to ask them to come back, but trust me, I don't like to go to more meetings than I need to. But it doesn't sound like we have what we need tonight to do this.
Our lawyer agreed with them at the meeting.
I understand, he's not here and he didn't communicate that to his partner, so what can we do?
Well, he was supposed to, because he told me at the time he wouldn't be here.
I, I said that Mr. Emery, hi, his position to me was that the city does not own the property. And so that if there was any transaction that could occur between the city and Oldham County Schools, that would have to take the form of a quitclaim deed, which is a deed that essentially says, I don't know if I have any interest, or if I have any interest in that land, it's yours. And, and so that would be the mechanism by which we would have to do that.
We could have that document at the Ordnance Committee meeting, it could be reviewed by Ordnance Committee and reviewed by the board.
They do not need to go to an ordinance meeting. You all don't need to settle it, we need to settle it, not just the ordinance meeting. So why make them go to one?
I, I think we're okay to attending that meeting if you guys want us there. We really want to have this conversation started because if not, it's going to be another year. We've got school going on, we have a very limited time when we can actually get in there and pave that.
Sure.
So it's either a, a school break or a summer.
Yeah.
We don't want it to keep going farther and farther. So if it helps, we'll attend to that next meeting and we'll bring what we need.
I mean, I think we could arrange to put it number one on the agenda and then we could just get it done quickly.
You'll, you'll be number one, first item that will.
First one, I've been number one for a long time.
That's right.
Appreciate that.
Hey, anytime.
But I, I don't want to speak for everybody on council, but I think all of us want this resolved in favor of the schools getting the, the needed improvements done. So I don't think, I just think we're just making sure it's done legally and fairly to everybody, so.
Does it work for you, Wayne?
Yes, it does, yes. So when is that meeting, the 27th?
It'll be Wednesday, the 27th at 6 o'clock at City Hall.
So it'll be on the agenda?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Two years.
Do we have any more new business?
Yes, I do. Since I found out that we did request money, I didn't know it before, that we requested money for the elementary school, I'd like to make a motion that we do accept the $2,000 to pay for books for the library again.
Isn't there a line item in the budget for this? So do we really need to make a separate move, motion for it? It's already in the budget.
I've never had to make a motion before.
To me, it looked like it was on the August expenditure that we did spend it.
It's on there.
Or that we did provide some sort of payment for.
Okay.
LaGrange Elementary.
We usually, they tell us what we want, what they want, which they're saying books, then they order 2,000 and then we pay for it.
Right.
It's been going on for several years. Sometimes it's not books, sometimes it's, it's got something to do with a computer. I can't even remember some of the stuff.
So what was the 2,000 that was written for this month?
We did not use it last year and so we have it again next year, it's on books.
No, Jean, you're misunderstanding.
Oh, what?
On the bills paid for this month.
Oh, I don't know, what?
If you look, look down your bills paid, we already paid 2,000.
She just told me last one. So it was paid after all?
Yes.
You ordered the books?
I would have to check with our office staff.
I know just last week you told me that you'd sent over the request and hadn't heard anything, yeah.
Heather, was there a copy of the invoice in the packet?
In the bills.
Yes, okay. It was for books, okay.
Well, now, did they already get the books? They've already got the books?
It had a list of all the books that they requested, with the invoice and how much it was.
And it was, the check was written?
Was it 2,000? Was it 2,000?
Jean, the check was written August 18th, $2,005.47.
Well, I guess the thing would be, is that last year's or this year's? Because we never gave them anything last year, even though it was in our budget. So is that going to be last year's and we still?
I'm assuming it's for this year.
So they just don't get last year's, even though it was in our budget and we didn't do anything?
If they ordered books and sent us a list, just like they did this time, and an invoice, we would have paid them.
No, because we, at that time, this is how long this paving's been going. At that time, I even talked to her about, in fact, I said, what are you wanting? She said, the thing I want the most is the front of my school paved. So we didn't do anything else because that was when I started coming and asking you all for a pavement. So they didn't get anything last year at all. So you can count it as last year's or this year's or whatever, but we owe them 2,000 from last year and this year because it was on our budget. And they did not get anything last, in last year's budget. If we're going back to July, they just got them, apparently. So this has got to be in this year's budget, but we did not get them anything from last year. And 2,000 was in the budget for last year also.
Did they order any books and send us an invoice? We don't just give out 2,000, we wait for books and invoice.
It isn't always, Joe, it's not always books, it's been computers, it's been all kinds of things.
We don't pay anything without an invoice, Jean, that's what I'm saying. Pay invoices, we'll pay it.
We were not getting an invoice because we were talking about paving in front of the school. Even though you kept fighting me over it, that was still, I was still holding that out. I was even, remember, if you remember at a meeting, I said, we did not give them 2,000 last year. They have another 2,000 coming this year, that'd be 4,000. I think Cory said it'd take about 6,000. And I said, there you go, 4,000, you don't remember that, of course. But that's what was said. So don't act like you didn't know what it was because you did. In fact, it was our fir, first budget meeting, our very first budget reading upstairs in, at City Hall. Or at, yeah, City Hall. I said very plainly, here's 2,000, here's 2,000, that's 4,000. Cory said, take, you said, how much would it take, Cory? And Cory said, oh, about 6,000 or so. I said, there you go, $4,000.
Any more new business? I'd like a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you. All in favor, stand up.
I tell you, if you City Council don't start taking hold of this place, you might as well forget it. Two, three people makes all the rules.